We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty.
We'd like to welcome everybody to the September 10th Town Board Meeting here at Dublin Town Hall. We'll have the roll call of the board.
Three minutes.
Rhonda Picktop present.
Rex Snyder present.
Jane Gavin present.
Nathan Allerickens present. Dan Wicker is absent tonight.
He's doing.
He's doing very well. He's in the rehab and his spirits are really high, so it's good.
Have they started with the cross disses yet? Are they still waiting for more healing?
I think they're waiting for more healing, that's what I heard.
Something about you.
Everyone had a chance to look over the minutes. If so, we'll seek approval of the minutes and adjustments that are presented to us.
I make a motion we accept the minutes and adjustments that are presented.
Motion is our second.
Second.
In all favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You got a police report for us tonight, sir?
Yes, sir.
I've got a big one. It would be easier for you to see.
It would be.
You're welcome.
One call for an abandoned vehicle, one, no, two animal neglect calls, one animal problem, one assist law enforcement, two civil disputes, one community policing, one fire alarm residential, one officer was flagged down, one illegal burn, two adult battery investigations, one investigation, two parking complaints, three speak with officers, one special patrol, two suspicious vehicles, eight traffic stops, one vacant house check, and one welfare check.
Do we have any questions for Officer Stover?
Yeah, we had a complaint here about these delivery trucks and town speeding. I don't know how fast they're going, but they're like UPS and FedEx and stuff. If you would keep an eye on him and mine, I don't think they're really speeding, but 30 mile an hour is quick enough to, you know, free people out sometimes, so. Yeah, just being around Chapel and State Street, you know, that end town, so.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Keep that way.
I'll let the other guys know.
Yeah, and I don't know if we can get speed limits signed for it or not, because...
I talked to Lenny about it. He's working on that.
Alright, well, that's good.
Thanks, sir. Fire report, Chief Myers?
Zero ALS, PLS 137, 911, what I read looked like seven, that note you gave me. I have a three. Fire runs, one illegal burn in town, Bucelade, one in Cambridge City, water used 6,500 gallons.
Any questions to Chief Myers? Alright, you got any building permits this month?
Yes. Thank you. I believe we had three. Four. Jeffrey Stevens was one as well. Jeffrey Stevens, Matt Davis, Dana Coombs, and A Morgan.
Would any possible dates on here, on these?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. At first I had like, oh, January, then I'm like, oh no, that's number one.
I can contribute.
Thank you.
Any questions for Lenny on the building permits? Alright, you want to go right on into your superintendent's report?
Yeah, you got some reports.
Can we give a quick summary?
I don't have it in front of me.
Are we still mowing?
Yes. Well, we didn't this week because, you know, grass is not really growing much, so.
Right.
Kind of slowed down on that. Just the, we did get the bucket truck fixed, I believe.
Which line?
The fuel line was running across the top of the muffler, and it was on the bottom side of the frame, so it was the heat from the muffler, I think, might have been vapor locking the fuel line.
Oh, low way down there?
So, I put a new fuel line on it, moved it to the top side by the cab, and then we used it, and it's working fine now. So, new fuel pump and a new line. So, that's not too much going.
You were able to get some of the poles on for the banners that were swinging around?
Yes, we did get, we did get all the banners that were swinging and flying loose, so we got poles put back on those.
The rest should be here, I believe, by the end of the month.
Okay. About time to take them down.
Yeah.
How many lights you got left?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, I count out soon.
Twenty-three.
We'll have that done by trick or treat.
That's the goal.
Perfect. Have we got a chance to do anything with the drain down on Schofield Alley yet?
No, sir.
Anything from the board?
Guy's working out?
Yep. Doing a good job.
And nothing on a part timer?
No.
Oh.
No. How are we doing on hours with our temporary? Is that what this paper here is?
That's what this paper is.
Can you kind of give us a brief on how that's laid out?
This was through hours worked September 6th. We've spent $2,509.65 out of $7,800 allotted for the year, so he's doing very well on temporary hours. So.
Cut.
That cut back pretty good when Guy was hired, so.
And Rick is pretty much just interested in mowing only?
Yep.
You wouldn't be able to do the infested area removal?
I don't know. I talked to him about it.
I hope we don't have to do that, but it's possible.
Yeah, I would rather not too, but from what I've heard from everybody, we're in for it, so, you know.
Are the other two that are on the list, are they pretty much done? Do we need to keep them on the rosters anymore, or what do you think? Jeremiah or Teddy?
Well, I mean, I'd just say, just as far as Jeremiah, I'd probably keep him, because he may be available in the summer if we get, you know, if something happens, Rick doesn't want, he doesn't want to do it next year, then we, at least we still got Jeremiah, or then we could fall back on him maybe a day or two until we find somebody else. If everybody's okay with that. I mean, I'd...
Are you still actively seeking any part-time person for the one you tried to fill, or you think you're pretty good shape till the end of the year?
I'm gonna try and get through the end of the year. Just gonna try and do with what we got and try and get as much done as we possibly can.
Teddy don't want to work anymore?
Yeah, he's working full-time for Milton now, so.
Any other big surprises we need to know about or things coming up?
Uh, no, don't think so.
Have you had a chance to come up with any lease dates, or is it about next month?
Yes, yes. That's next month. It's actually in October. I think it's towards the end of the month. Is that still hanging over there?
Yes.
We're gonna be doing some hydrant flushing, too. I think that's in October as well, so.
We have October 21st, 22nd, November 11th and 12th, and December 3rd if needed for lease pickup. And of course, as Lenny said, that may change if they start falling sooner. And then hydrant flushing, we're looking at October 28th and 29th.
We'll take a couple pictures of them after a while.
Sure.
Cut. Anything else to harass Lenny about tonight? We're always on the hot seat. Now's your time.
We're in the list now.
Okay. Alright, and I guess we'll let him go. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mrs. McCarty has got a quote for us for our new AC unit here at the Town Hall.
Yes, we had to call Dungen's Inn, and they are doing a wonderful job of keeping our 1970's air conditioning unit.
Good old days.
Working, yes. But they keep, they keep letting us know that, you know, not necessarily going to be able to find parts for it, and it may just go out. So, we had them go ahead and give us a quote.
Is the furnace the same age, or is it newer?
I don't know. It's older than I am.
Well, it ought to come in the same time, but I don't know. I mean, maybe we should check and see if we can... Well, I know it's a newer one, because it's a...
Yeah, it's inefficient.
Yeah, it's inefficient, yeah. So, yeah, it's newer. Okay, never mind. That's good.
And then in the one in the garage, they said to just keep that one as is, because you don't want the efficiency out there.
Right.
So, as long as that sucker works. That's probably an original one.
Yeah, that's, yeah, a little early for it down here, yeah.
Would we have such funds, and which fund would it come from?
You would ask me that?
Yeah, I'd say if we can afford it on this year, we should get it done, and not wait till next summer.
Yeah, because all next year's gonna be higher.
Exactly.
I can do it out of rainy day. That's probably the best, the best one.
Dad called me this morning. Well, what'd he say? Still haven't had our meeting again tomorrow. Oh, okay, well, I'll leave you alone then.
So, we're looking good in there, so if somebody wants to make a motion to purchase a new two-ton condenser from Duncan Clean and Heating for a price of $3,550?
We're just gonna go with the one bid, or a bid for...
I like supporting local myself. I don't know who else locally would be wanting to do that, so.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, motion.
They're a great donor to the park especially, you know, things we've had down there, so.
Motion to approve Duncan's quote for new AC for $3,550.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Is there a question or concern before the vote?
No.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We can let him know. That's a good...
Okay. I'm sure he'll call me first. He's a good man.
He is. The other one we have is the Neptune 360 handheld upgrade. We were able to switch to the MRX system for the water, and then we still had to use our old handheld until they were able to get the electric software combined with it to give us one, one unit. They were not charging us until they got to that point, so now they're to that point. If we keep our old system, the monthly fee is $3,800. If we go to the new system, which can be upgraded, where we can get reports, have two years' worth of usage, the readers have access to the information without having to wait for them to come back in and ask me, you know, different things, and it's only $3,500 a year. Not a month, it's a year. And this will upgrade when we get the rest of our water, and as we upgrade our, eventually when we renew our electric again as well.
This is from the handheld reader, correct, is what we're talking about?
Yes.
And the one we currently have, we're borrowing. Is that correct still?
We are borrowing because you can't get parts for them anymore, and so they gave us a loaner, what, four years ago, five years ago?
Yeah, five years ago.
Yeah.
This is replacing that, is that...
This is replacing that, and ours is no longer working, and we're reading by hand those meters, so.
So, we're not out anything by the loaner, so we're in really good shape.
I make a motion we accept this bid for $3,500 for the new Neptune update upgrade.
There's a motion to accept a $3,500 bid from Utility Supply Company for a new handheld reader. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that gets split between electric and water.
Alright, anything else under reports? If not, we'll jump into old business and talk about the budget.
We actually have to open a public hearing at 6:15 for comment from anyone, if they would like to comment.
Does anyone from the crowd have a comment?
Johnny Chair 3 said he's in.
No comments. Any concerns or comments from the Town Council? Public hearing is closed. The adoption meeting will be held during our regular meeting, October 8th at 6:00 p.m.
In case you want to bring a cake, that's my birthday.
Mine, too.
Is it?
That's a good date.
Two cakes. Talk about an elbow.
What? You're not gonna share?
Have enough for everybody.
Yeah.
Go around.
I'll make a cake. I always love an excuse to bake a cake.
We don't need a motion to prove anything?
No.
So, be here October 8th.
Why do we have to wait to adopt it then? I mean, you can't do it at the same time you do the hearing and stuff, okay?
No, you have to have so many days between the public hearing and the adoption.
Okay, so somebody can protest it that way, or...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Politics.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Job lot. Alright, what do you got under the BLIP program?
Sarah contacted me last week. We are, they have gotten the environmental testing, and they are waiting the results of those, so that's, we need those results, and then we can put the specs together to put the three of them out for bed. The one concern they had is that we still have an individual living on the property at one of the properties, so because it's deemed unsafe, we need to work on asking him to remove whatever belongings he wants removed, because everything else is gonna be gone.
So, they'll tear down the garage as well, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. All the buildings.
I'm sure he's aware of that.
It was included in the order. And he was given the order, which he gave back, and told us to get it to his sister. And his sister was in communication with our attorney, so they were made aware of everything.
Did he actually sign the paper or just hand it back?
Oh, he just handed it back. He didn't sign it, did he? I don't think so.
Yeah. So, we'll leave it in his sister's capable hands?
Yes.
Cut. Very good. Alright, it's time to talk about trash, everybody's favorite topic tonight. Last week we had a, or last month, we had a really good meeting with the administration, and I thought that went really wonderful, until the next week, and they personally missed my trash for two weeks. So, that really hurt my feelings after we had a really good conversation.
After they promised so much.
And then, uh...
They did pick up mine, though.
That's good. And then that next week, it just seemed like all chaos broke loose. Several were missed. Actually, I was at Canal Days this weekend, not wearing a town hat whatsoever or talking any town business, and I overheard two different conversations as I'm walking by, people talking about issues they've had up in Dublin trash. And one lady said she's gone four weeks without trash pickup, and one lady said she went chasing them down the alley in her housecoat, so they would pick their trash up, and it was just, you know, I wasn't even, trash wasn't even on the topic of conversation, but I'm out in the public, and that was their topic of conversation. So, it's been a constant issue here in the town, and I'm afraid things are not getting any better. It doesn't seem like. It seems like we keep getting the same story. Every couple weeks, we got a new driver, and I don't know if the new driver's not getting trained, or we're just throwing them in the truck or what, but it seems like we're having the exact same excuse, and no results seem to be improving, in my opinion.
This is year three, or year four.
What's a low-volume curb service?
I need to get with them and find out what they consider. If it's just like one bag a week or two bags a week, anything over that would be considered normal, normal volume. Because we do have a few in town that that's, you know, they may only have one every other week or one a week, somewhere in that.
Do we have any statistics or data of what percentage of residents this is affecting on a weekly, monthly, annual basis?
You mean as far as, like, who's getting missed?
Right, like, I mean, is this affecting 20% of the residents a month? I mean, what, what are those numbers? Is this 5%, 20%?
It's probably around 10%. Last week was more. I think a lot of the problem, a partial number of those people are the same ones every single month, and these are not people that are waiting until they leave and bringing them out. We had those situations when they first came, so I kind of have an idea with those people, and I don't feel that these, that is the problem now.
And a lot of them is it's the one-block alleys that's messing up, and they just miss it because it's not on a record long route, so they skip it. So, it makes it rough that way, but they should know that we're there and pick them up.
Yeah. The ones down here, like you said, when they were driving through a lady's house, or through her drive in her yard, and tearing up her yard so that they could make the turn, when we got on them for doing that, there's no other way to get to that alley. And so, they're just not remembering to put those people at all.
Now, this new bid we're looking at, it's a little bit vague as far as description, but would they be using the rear load, or would they be using the one-arm trucks?
That's all, no, that's all, that's all these people use is rear load.
So, we wouldn't have to have any issues where people are having to move their trashcans to different locations that they're used to?
Correct.
This, like I said, depends on the size of the truck. That's the problem we got. The trucks are bigger than our alleys, so, and it's kind of tight for them and stuff. We might have to talk to our customers to help them out that way.
There may be some, like, those down at that end may have to move.
And same way with, you might have put her down on the street.
They're used to the alley. The ways need to see what they can do, and how hard it's going to be to get up that alley.
Do you feel like we want to have a conversation with them in here, or do you feel like looking at this as enough?
It'd be nice to talk to them, make sure they understand what we want, you know, as far as, you know, the alleys and stuff. Time to explain our situation, maybe, but...
Have they had a look through the town, in the...
Yeah, because they were the other original bidders.
Don't we have any black road down the alleys and seen something in person?
They did back then, they didn't now.
The same people, or, you know?
The same people. My contact is the same person for the first time.
That's optimistic. I did talk to one of the Cambridge residents. I was at their house the other day, and they said they had no issue whatsoever with the rent. Even every year they live in Cambridge, and said they go above and beyond. If she doesn't have her trash out yet, they said I don't wait for it, bring it out to them. So, she said it's phenomenal to work with, so.
And one man on a truck?
Okay. Hey, Mr. Gavin.
I was thinking, does that come, goes up 50 cents next year, and you got one year, and then following year goes up, it's gonna go 50 cents every year following that, or is that just a...
It's, I think it's 5% is what it, what it's, what they do is 5%.
Like the top of the...
And that's, that's what Big B did as well. I think on the original contract, both of them were 3.5%, and this contract is just finishing our existing contract, the two years that we have. But with COVID and everything since then, they've had to increase, and that is the same rates that they're at. I think they're 16 and 1/4 down in Cambridge, so.
What did Big B charge you for extra tons? They have four price? $3.75.
And there's this four.
Yeah, I seen this four.
They will do the four, four large pickups a year, I believe, is what it said, two...
I don't have a calculator. So, it's $2.80. Is that a 20% increase, or do about?
Of what?
Current, we're currently paying $13.25, and it's gonna go up to $16.05. That's a 21% trash increase per month, per last night.
There you go.
That's how I feel. That's why I'd like to know, is this affecting half the town? Quarter of the town? 5% of the town, it's hard to justify 100% of the town paying for a 2% problem. I don't, I don't know what that number is. I mean, mine's been missed, but I don't really want to pay more for one time, one time in three, four years. You know, I don't, I'd rather not pay more, and knowing we have some large water increases coming very soon, that makes it hard to throw on top of that.
Right. And we can, you know, work with them, and then when the contract comes up again, bid it all out like we did last time.
And you said Best Way won't bid it because...
Best Way bids it, but Best Way can only do...
Automatic.
Automatic arm, which we cannot do down the alleys at all.
So, this increase is basically $3 a month, right?
$2.80.
$2.80 a month, which is pretty close to...
You're right now.
Your thoughts on your spatter?
No, I mean, I agree with Bree. I hate to see it increase that much, but I hate to see the town get all the calls and stuff. We miss trash, we're doing this and that.
I'm not sure it's that.
I don't know. I'm like, her meat finds out once.
Well, yeah.
I don't think it is for sure a lot of change. You had a list here that last month.
Well, yeah. For, there was a couple months, if we can math. I mean, we have 375-ish?
Ish, yes.
So, here's six, here's four, and that's, but then here's something all door trailer parked. I don't get how many that is, but... I mean, four people out of 275, it's kind of hard to justify that increase.
Same, yeah. A lot of the courses in the alleys is...
So, people don't want to set their trashcans out front, or they just don't have to, or...
Well, it's not too bad on some of the alleys, but there's several alleys where there's no front, so you have to drag them out pretty far. The older people's hard to even drag it out, especially if they're... That's why they're not...
But they're missing ones right down 40. I mean, you can't fix...
No, I'm saying for like Best Way to bid it, to set them up.
Yeah.
Not saying they'll be cheaper.
Most places can be placed toward the road. There's just a few houses in between there that's going to be tied to where they have to drag it. Not quite a bit to do it.
And if I remember right on the other quotes, well, I don't know. I don't want to say... Well, I don't know, I don't wanna say, cause I don't know if Bestway was in that competitive or. Cause actually Rumpie was, was cheaper, we were gonna recycle, which put Big B, and then we didn't. But we set Bestway aside because um, they have the automatic, so I can't tell you if they were competitive or not.
So everybody.
And like Rumpie, they was trying to keep it.
Thought we decided maybe down here for the day and talked, it was gonna be another chance to straighten our act up.
Yeah, the next two weeks it went totally terrible. They didn't improve and uh, huge worst right after meeting. Including mine for two weeks in a row. Are you kidding me? Yeah, I thought we were buddies that night.
Yeah, they actually, they wondered a company because.
And they did, the time that they came, is that last fall? They were here, this is the second time we've requested them to be here.
Second third. They talk like they almost have employee problem. Do they come back each time that they miss a place?
Sometimes.
But they have that specific address, they know where to go to. You know, it's not like they have to think about a lot, you just go down the street.
So we got one more year with Big B or just?
Um, through June of twenty-sixth.
Oh, well, okay.
You'd have a little vehicle hurdle to, but I, boy, with all the things they've missed, I think we might be able to terminate for cause.
It's thirteen months, right?
They can challenge that, but I'm not sure. They'd be hard pressed. Cause you've given them chances to correct twice.
Well, we would have to have a reason to terminate, do we?
I think early on the contract maybe, I can't remember. Either way, I think you can get, even for cause, I think is good with the circumstances.
How much time would you guess newly you spend a week as far as minutes or even an hour dealing with all the calls and jotting down notes and making up the list and calling Big B and? It's taken away from your normal job.
I mean, if you add, if you add it all up, um, you know, I mean, it's not a lot. I would say an hour, two hours a week, it's not a lot.
Two hours, five percent, forty a week.
What do you hear on the street, Lenny?
Well, I mean, I get, I get phone calls too and you know, I just, I basically just text Dean and you know, he gets, tries to get somebody out here, you know.
And just generally talking, oh, do you hear a lot of frustration when people are talking over there and when they say they missed it?
Absolutely, especially whenever they do get missed, you know, they're frustrated, especially when it's been, you know, multiple weeks, you know, then they get frustrated. That's when, that's when they really start to get aggravated. I mean, I had one guy threaten to bring it up here and dump it on my lot. You know, so I mean, you know, they're, they're aggravated and you know, I mean, the, the only, and, and. You know, I mean, I, I know that they are supposed to pick up in the alleys and that, that's a huge part of it. And these single alleys, they, they need to figure out how to get there is what I'm trying to get at. They need to figure out a way to where they can pick that trash up and not miss it every week. That, I feel like personally, that should not be on the town, it shouldn't be on us. They need to take the initiative, step up and do that. If they really care about their customer, they need to step up and do that.
But even going down the alley.
Right, that's.
There, you know, even the main alley, they can pick one up on this side and miss the one that's right across the street or across the alley from it.
Right.
And you know, that's, that's training, not necessarily for the guy in the back, because if he's hanging on one side, he may only see one side, but the driver should, should see it and stop, so.
And that's, that's what I was getting at, is I, I don't feel like the, I don't feel like their initiative is there to wanna keep the contract. I mean, I just, that's my opinion. I don't feel like they, I don't feel like they wanna keep the contract. If they did, they would, I feel like the manager should be down here going over this route with these guys and making sure these guys do their job, because that's his job to make sure they do theirs. And he, he's came down one time and we walked through alleys and things that were missed and that's it.
That was before we, or right after we had him.
Right after we got, we came down one time.
And I mean, you know, if, if we tolerate it and, and see if we can work with it till this and, and you know, just. Chalk it up when, you know, we bid it out again. You know, that's, that, that works too.
You do have to have cause. It does give the provision that if you try to terminate early, at a minimum, you have to pay six months damage. So whatever their monthly fee is, you multiply that by six and even there it says, this is not, this will not remove any other available remedy to Big B because of your breach of the contract. So you have to show cause.
Well, that would probably cancel out with all the ones that they have to replace us where they crushed and damaged our totes.
Right.
So.
Well, and in that, I mean, if we, if we did decide to go that way, then maybe we can talk to our customers that are getting missed, you know, in these smaller alleys and things, see if they can move to the street. You know, I mean, I know it's an inconvenience for them, but at least their trash will get picked up. To me, that's, that's the most logical thing. That's just my opinion for what it's worth.
And let it ride and see how we do.
Yep, and yeah, I mean, just, and, and that's totally up to you guys. I'm just, I'm just putting my.
Most of the properties are about the same distance from the alley to the main, you know, it's not like it's a long ways difference to bring it to the front rather than the back. Most, most, uh, most of the houses property set about the middle of the lot, so it's not a.
Yeah, we drag ours to the back every week, so I mean, it's.
And do remember that even at the end of the term, it automatically rolls over for another five years unless you give them sixty days prior notice that you don't want it to roll over. So we all need to remember that come February of twenty-sixth.
Yeah. They, they don't have to re-bid it, they can just roll it over.
If, if nobody did anything, it would roll over.
I agree, I think we can talk to the people who has missed the most on the, on the one block alleys. And see if we can work with them to do it, that way we're showing Big B, we're trying to help them out a bit maybe.
Yeah, but I can see the customer saying, why should I go out of my way to help them do their job? They're getting paid for it. I can see both sides of it, definitely.
Yeah, that's it, you know.
Yeah, cause you know, while this town's elderly people, they're probably struggling just to get it where it goes anyway.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and that's the sad part, that's why I was saying that, you know, if, if, I feel like if they really cared, they would've done, reached out to somebody, hey, can you help, help get these guys where they need to be? Or they would've came down themselves and hey, look, here's where you gotta go, here's the route, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I just don't think.
I feel like they just put a pulse behind the wheel and say, go pick the trash up.
Yes.
Direction are given.
Get a map, see here's your go.
Well, they give them the app on their pad or whatever.
And he even admitted that.
That they just check it, they don't actually like match it up while they're doing it.
And we all know how those maps work in Dublin.
Yeah. My address doesn't exist anymore.
Sure, County can't even tell you what screwed you up. Kind of cross on the.
Well, we've been all over the place tonight, so we need to come up with some type of, of a consensus on where we're heading. Do we want to talk to other companies and get more quotes and actually have people come in here and talk to us and get more specifics? Do we feel like we wanna ride this conversation out and see if they'll get any better?
I think we try to ride it out a little longer. Certainly don't wanna get in a legal contract battle.
And it sounds like, um, the way Rex is talking, we may have to move everybody. With anyone else we do anyway.
You know, Rumpie's big trucks are gonna have problems down some of these alleys too, so. They're trying to make the turns once you get down the alley.
And on top of that, it is tearing the far out of them, literally.
The alleys.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, we had to stop one because it was, it was caving in.
And I would like to find out what the difference between residential and low volume is, so that's definitely a question I would like to find out.
Okay.
As far as this company is concerned.
And you know, when we come back, they may both be in line with each other of what they're going to charge.
And we may find it's just as cheap to buy a truck and put Lenny on the back of it.
Yep.
Could you go way back, just get.
There's an old dumpster up there, just go in the back, take it up and up. Ram said it's good luck of getting help, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have, add a couple more jobs, that'd be good.
Yep.
So we just have, um. Send a letter to those customers, have Lenny talk to those customers.
I'd like to have a manager come down here and sit right in the truck and say, hey, we've got a problem here or we don't have a problem here personally. You know, and if there is an issue.
Before we move people's trash cans, okay.
Right. Cause it may not make any difference at all.
It might be the advantage to go ahead and move the trash cans regardless of if the trucks are eating the alleys up.
Well, that's true. But once they're missing on forty, they're not gonna make any difference on them.
But uh, at some point we're gonna have to redo the alleys.
Yeah.
And uh, that's no cheaper than redoing the streets.
Is that just because the alley doesn't have as much bottom as the street does, is that?
Well, yeah, they're not, there's not as much, you don't have as much space under that alley as you do in a street. And so that, that alley, that asphalt gives more in that alley than it does on the street.
It's only two inches thick on the alley, so it's not that thick.
So, you know.
And we need to, we need to remember that most of our utilities are in those alleys too.
Yeah.
Yes.
How many houses would you guess that affects, twenty, thirty, forty?
Oh, a bunch.
What, for the alleys?
Oh, to never use the alley?
Yeah.
Whole lot.
Yeah.
I think it's the majority, isn't it?
So I guess my other question is, is there enough room on the streets with the vehicles to have all these cans out there?
That's the problem I have. And it, you know, an older person, you know, dragging it out there, especially in winter time. You know, when the snow covered, the ice covered, trying to walk out there with your cans and stuff.
Cause I can see him throws the road, next thing you know, Lenny comes by with a snow blade and there goes the trash can.
Well, yeah, he'll be pushing them down.
Well, they're not supposed to be on the road, are they?
Go with the cans?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, like, I, mine's on the grass.
Some people ain't got much of the grass in front of their house, so.
And you park on the street, some streets, you've got a bunch of people park their cars and it's gonna be a hassle.
And then the car is blocking the dumpster.
Let's just put a big dumpster up here and everybody brings their own trash bag up and put in it.
There you go.
That'll work well.
I lived in a town that had big dumpsters in the alleys and it was awesome because you just threw your trash out there. But then anybody threw anything they wanted in there because there's no monitoring it. And people from out of town came to town and dumped their trash in there.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So you can't do that.
We had that problem when it was over there on the corner.
Recycle.
Yeah.
So what are we doing, guys?
The great part of being the president. Trying to read minds.
I think we just kinda talk to them some more. Like I said, have them come down here and tell them our situation, what we're missing, see if they can get somebody, you know, get on the map and.
Not at the meeting, he needs to ride on a Monday.
Yeah, he needs to come here and go, Lenny, go out here and check it out or, or one of the board members, you know, Lenny's busy. One of the board members go out and go with some stuff.
You show the problem children and find a solution for the problem children.
Yeah.
You may be at a point though, you wanna at least put in writing the fact that if it is not correct, this has been enough problem, if it's not corrected, you'll have no choice but to terminate for cause.
Yeah.
Should have a paper trail.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Rex will be the person because he knows the route, so there's no reason not to put him in the truck.
Yeah.
So we need to do that in writing, that request in writing?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Bob, you're gonna do that for me?
I will do.
Where did that route originally designed, was that way before your day?
Well. I don't know, I mean, we use a dump truck, the dump truck, it took us four loads a day, it'll be empty. Could you go so far it's full, you go do it and come back. Trash truck, we just pick up, it's full and.
I mean, as far as saying, you know, you put your trash here and you put your trash there.
It's always been that way, it's just.
People just kinda naturally start sending it out?
Yeah, fuck out by the alley, cause that's how we used to do it, yeah.
If they try to say that it's the people aren't getting their trash out, you know you are, so that's not the problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah, most people are putting it out the night before now.
They've admitted they know it's a problem, I mean, they haven't denied a problem.
Although they, they hedged a little bit by saying it could be the people.
Well, sometimes.
Yes.
Well, this last Monday, it was out six-thirty, started down the alleys, I heard it was six-thirty in the morning, so.
So you might wanna remind people, cause I always thought it was stubborn.
Well, yeah. Whatever, they're supposed to be the night before, so I'll put that back out there.
Just a reminder.
As far as people moving their trash can, most of them are probably easier to move it to the front than the back because those driveways come out to the front. You go back, they're dragging across the grass.
A lot of people just see them sitting there, you know, they don't bring them in.
So it's moving it to the front.
They don't wanna have to bring them in.
Probably is not as detrimental, detrimental to the process as it sounds like.
I just don't know what the route looks like or what the people in place, so I'm, I hate to have any comment on any of it really. Other than I know there's a lot of unhappy folks. And not saying another company's gonna do any better, but you're just taking the chances. But I will say the turnover and the employees are very concerning, very concerning. Like, you know, is this company gonna say, we're closing our doors tomorrow? I think we need to definitely have a backup plan.
So Bob will.
Present a letter.
Present a letter of request.
And we can look at it via email and make sure.
Yeah, I'm just writing down, we're gonna tell them the problems with missing trash are still occurring in spite of their last meeting here, that we wanna arrange a manager or owner to take part in driving the route with one, something with a representative from the town to describe if there are any problems with any certain properties, that we are concerned with their employee turnover and don't wanna be left with a company that doesn't have employees and nowhere to go. And if all of this cannot be adequately resolved, the town will have no choice but to terminate the contract for cause. So that's.
Then would it be appropriate to present the list that you gave us last month or whenever of all the houses that got missed on that week? Or a week? Just so you can have evidence of what addresses are.
Okay.
Mostly concerns.
Yeah, I'll get them on a map and show them, this is, you know, where they're missing some.
Most of the misses are the same people every week?
Most of the time, yeah. And I guess in the meantime, we could work on other quotes and find out some of these questions and.
Yeah, to be ready for it.
See if another company wants to give a quote, if we do, are able to move everything to the street, if they can't do alleys.
Yeah, because if you can't find an adequate alternative, that could have an impact on how harsh you wanna be with these guys.
Right. You and Lenny wanna tackle that over the next few weeks? See how it do work.
About as much as I wanna pick trash up.
I feel motivation coming out.
I'll go back to the bags only.
All right, another discussion on trash. All right, it's time to talk about the water rate. We need to think about raising our water rates, we haven't done that in quite a while and it's been holding off about as long as we can hold off.
The rate study was done in, in twenty twenty-one and we did not act on the water increase at that time because we were thinking that our grant would go into effect. go into effect sooner. So the last rate increase we had on the water was twenty fifteen, so you're talking almost ten years. And rather than wait now until SRF tells us, you know, it has to be here, we need to be doing increments so that it's not such a.
You said, when I changed last rate study, did you?
It was twenty, twenty-one was the rate study. Twenty fifteen was our, our rates are twenty fifteen rates.
Okay. For the new people, rate studies, just when they come in and look at pre-anticipated costs and try to figure out, okay, how much do we need to charge to come up with the meeting?
Yes.
So can we do something like quarterly increase instead of just bam?
Prior ones you have done over time.
We've done one each year.
Maybe I'd rather see something like that a quarter or six months versus one each month some, just to get people adjusting and then they don't notice it so much.
So if I read this correctly, right now that we're at five oh two, you want to do it five ninety-one?
That's, yeah.
That was proposed. So less than a dollar a gallon for ten thousand gallons.
That's ten thousand gallons, yeah. So it's point oh oh five oh two per gallon.
So you're thinking to go to the recommendation of that study, not do a new study?
Correct.
Which by the time we get this increased, there'll probably be time for a new study and it's going to go up even more.
Right.
We're behind the times, basically.
We are very, very, very behind.
So maybe try to do a one time head instead of quarterly because we're such deficit.
And with that, um, you have a, um, minimum fee that also increases. Um, our, our rate itself isn't that far off of whatever communities like Cambridge is. Um, but our, where is it? The, uh, minimum is, so if we start maybe with our rate plus a lower minimum, um, I had that proposed on the back. The average household has thirty-four hundred gallons a month usage. So if we do the five, five ninety-one for ten thousand gallons increase. And, but on the minimum, do like twenty-two oh seven instead of the proposed twenty-four sixty-eight. The increase would be, it'd be about four dollars and forty-four cents per thirty-four hundred gallons. So it'd go, currently, we are at forty dollars and sixty-nine cents for that usage. It would go to forty-five thirteen instead of the proposed forty-seven ninety-two.
And you do have to give public notice of these, but hey, if you have a chance for me to come in here and you can't just say, okay, let's do it, it's effective.
The top one I did at four thousand gallons.
Oh, yeah.
And then the bottom one is at thirty-four because I went back to our, and our average is thirty-four hundred gallons.
So the two numbers up here, twenty-three sixty-four and twenty-four sixty-eight, what are those two nine so they don't?
Twenty, okay, the first number is the actual rate, which is the, um, point oh oh five nine one. That's the actual charge per gallon.
Okay.
Okay. The bottom one is the meter fee or the, the maintenance.
The base rate?
The base rate. So you're charged that base rate whether you use any consumption or not. It's the minimum fee.
That's the minimum fee and then of all the water you use is the top.
Yes. Yes. So when you look at the bottom portion of that for the thirty-four hundred gallons, we are currently at forty dollars and sixty-nine cents. That includes tax. Okay. If you go all the way to the right, that's Cambridge's. For that same amount, their rate, they would, they're paying forty-three thirty-one, so we're actually less than them right now. And dependent on what we go to for the proposed rate. If we go to the full proposed base, that's the bottom one, um, the option two, is the twenty-four sixty-eight. And that's, that's a big hit. You know, that's over seven dollars.
Oh, how come, how come the, the meter fee is so much more, is four dollars more than what they did?
The new rate.
That's the new rate. That's what they, when they did our rate study, that's what they recommended.
So the base rate goes up and the water per gallon.
Yes, they both go up.
Yeah.
So if you look, this, this right here is the recommendations that we received. And the second, the second one on that is our base charge. And, and that's what their recommendation is.
We have no un-meters.
No. So I figure we have more wiggle room on the base rate. You know, and that could definitely, we could, we could do the, the actual charge per gallon where it should be. And we could start off at a lower base rate and then work that up, um, a little bit at a time. Because I think that's, that's a bigger, that's, that's a bigger part of the rate.
It's a good job.
Yeah, I definitely like the option.
But we haven't raised it in almost ten years either, so.
That's true.
They've got to understand that.
Right.
Nobody agrees with us.
No.
Have, have them sit on the board.
And this doesn't affect sewer, anything?
No, sewers.
Their own board does that. We just pass that along.
Exactly.
Which the sewer's a lot higher than the water. Because they got a new plan.
And with the proposed rate, if we, if we only do the base at twenty-two oh seven instead of the twenty-four, um, we are only a dollar eighty-two higher than Cambridge. And that's not bad considering they have industrial and commercial and, and all we have is residential, so that's, that's.
So you're looking at going.
Pretty comparable.
Going up two dollars roughly, you're around a dollar, a dollar and seven cents actually. And then like a year later going up some more, a year later going up some more?
Four, six months.
Four, six months.
To get up to this twenty-four sixty-eight?
Yeah. Because either, no matter what we do, it's going to hurt, but no matter what we do, when we get to the end of our, our water grant, SRF is going to come in and knowing, um, the income, the average income of people, they do take that in consideration. But they're going to say, your rates need to be between here and here. And right now, our rates are way down here, so we need to slowly work up so that it won't be such a.
Big shock.
Yeah, because as part of that grant agreement, we don't have a say-so in that. So trying to, doing a little at a time.
So if we do two, do the six month thing, can that just be one notice, Bob?
Uh, yeah, you can do it one notice and still do stages.
Okay.
Yeah. And just one hearing on it, but you just have to advertise it as two stages.
Okay.
Here, September this year, September next year, or however else we do it. You have all the flexibility you want, whether it's quarter, month, year, but, um, we really have to be worried about it.
I like the six month.
Making that a motion?
So we're looking, going to twenty-two today.
What would be today?
That's six months, six months going to.
So when would this?
Fifty cents more or a dollar more?
It would be this next year or two.
Next June.
Well, how quickly are you wanting to get to this twenty-four sixty-eight within a year or two?
About a year.
Do that within a year?
Yeah.
Just base rate on top of it.
We have to do about three months then, six months, six months, six months to get there.
Well, a year from now, so we would do like this for the first six months and then do this one in the second six months. First break it down to two categories.
When can we start this?
Um, we have to advertise.
Never. Just about.
We have to advertise, uh, ten days prior to and then have a public hearing.
I, I don't know, I forget.
Probably two months.
I mean, I think you could probably do it so that you have a public hearing the next month's meeting, if you do it right away.
And then the rates, we could have it effective November first?
Mm-hmm.
And then whatever that six months would be?
Be March, yeah.
I'm good with that. I'd rather do that than one.
Yeah, I agree.
And you can say it's literally been ten years.
Yeah. All right, you want to make a motion?
Okay, I would like to make a motion.
I don't need to do it. Does it really have a public hearing next month? You need a motion to have a public hearing?
Well, yeah, the, you know, you can't pass your rate right now, but at least you are making a motion to propose this rate increase of blah, 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 to take effect, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to increase the water rates, a proposal of base charge twenty-two oh seven and water ten thousand gallons of five ninety-one. That will possibly go into effect November first. And then another increase possibly on April first of twenty twenty-five to the base rate of twenty-four sixty-eight. And then the water would still be the five ninety-one.
And, um, just so everybody knows, the, the numbers that she is talking about is for the residential rate. Knowing that the rest of the rates, all of those will be advertised for commercial or industrial as it's listed on there.
Yes.
But we don't have a whole lot of those, so.
Are you changing, what you quoted for the per gallons is for the first ten thousand gallons, is there any reason to impact the next, the next ten thousand, the next thirty thousand? Because that's part of this. Or will everybody always be under ten thousand?
No, there's.
Some would go more than that.
Some would go more than that.
So what are you going to do with that?
That, that would stay. We're gonna, we're gonna follow this.
Guideline.
Guideline, right here.
Well, that's not, although that five sixty-nine is not what she quoted.
No, she quoted this.
The five ninety-one?
We're doing this one all the way through.
Okay.
Yes.
The whole thing?
Yes.
And this column is what will take effect in November, or that's what's going to be altered?
Except for this right here. This, this is what is going to be altered.
Okay.
The rest of it will stay the same, and then in six months, this is what we will be at.
Okay, stop. Give me one more time. It's immediately, is it going to go to this, we're talking two different things, on the rate and then the rate?
Base charge.
On the rate, are you going to go to this imme- immediately?
Yes.
Then after six months, where do you go on rate?
Rate will stay the same.
Rate's not going to change then?
Right.
It'll just go up one time?
It'll go up one time.
Okay, but the base charge is going to be an increase?
Yes, it will be twenty-two oh seven.
Okay.
And then the twenty-four sixty-eight.
The November first is going to be a bigger hit than the April first.
Okay, and then.
I'll have to figure what, I'll have to figure what those are, yeah.
Okay, for the one inch, one and a half and two inch meters. You're just going to do that proportionately from what this was too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, the first one's going to be higher because that's the one that's going to take into effect the, the usage amount, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion of the second to propose a budget increase in the water and we will have that proposal next month at the meeting for public review and discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, any other old business that didn't make the agenda tonight? All right, go jump into new business. Swing set at the Dublin Village Apartments, there's a family that would like to see about purchasing the old swing set. So I guess that means the town owns that swing set and not the apartments, is that what you're saying?
Yes, um, from the water tower forward to Maple Street, that L and to the driveway belongs to the town, which would incorporate the basketball and the swing set. And actually, the family, um, that's wanting to purchase it lives in Dublin, so it would stay in Dublin.
And they would take care of removing it?
Yes.
And making the ground back to normal as possible?
And they, yes, they have the equipment.
Does anybody use that?
No.
Okay.
It's a frame, that's all it is.
Um, the Western Wayne Affordable Housing had talked about putting.
Wood swings in.
Wood swings in there, but there wasn't enough, um.
Too far.
Yeah, so nobody was interested in that, so they didn't act on it.
Is there such a thing as we can donate that, Bob, or just say there's no price requested?
But they, but they would have.
You can't to a private family. You could, you could, with no consideration, give it to another municipality. You can also donate it to a nonprofit organization. The minute you start giving it, you just can't pick and choose a family.
Can we donate it to Dublin Village Apartments?
Yes, you could do that. But you, if, the minute you get just individual citizens in, you're going to have to have a mini auction for it. Because you can't just pick one taxpayer over another and say, hey, you want this?
Would that work for Dublin Village Apartments, you think?
I think it could, yeah.
Now, does Dublin Village Apartments want the swing set? Or who, who's wanting the swing set?
Well, what we're talking about, we can't give it to an individual.
Right.
So if we give it to a nonprofit like Dublin Village Apartments.
No, 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 they don't give it to me.
They can give it to me.
Worry about it. It's basically almost in their property anyway. I'm surprised that they don't know that, but I guess we have a little right of way there. That's probably why none of the kids even go back there because it looks like it's basically private property.
Yeah. And there's no swings, it's just a frame all over, so.
So we're just doing the swing set? What about the basketball court?
Do they want that too?
I'm not particularly, but.
Dublin Village Apartments want it gone.
Sorry.
I mean, they, they, they use the cement to.
Wootier and wootier.
Destroy their, um.
Brush.
Brush.
So we should, so we should charge storage for that, is what you're saying?
Would it be to our advantage just to donate that whole section of land to the village and get it out from under our control? No, we don't have to mow it, we don't have to take care of it.
I mean, they maintain it, they mow it. The only thing we do is cut trees down, which is expensive, but, yeah, that's the only thing we've, we've had to do to that.
What was the reason to keep that? Was it because of a water main or something?
I, you know, I wondered about that. I, I know it was kind of scurry as far as what all was going on.
I know, that's because there was a water main that went through there or something?
I don't remember. Um, there's nothing over there. I don't remember.
It's water, it's, it's right away to get to the water tower.
You have to drive through the fence.
No, they go, they have right of way through the driveway area to get to.
I just remember there was something that, that for some reason the town wanted to keep that.
I think it was more for control.
I wonder if it was more for getting grants, if the town actually got the grant for the next building?
It, it could have been because I think the grant was, I think they were involved the first time. Um, I know Western Wayne had looked into a grant to put up a second, um, apartment complex there and met with, uh.
Lot of.
Yeah.
Lot of.
Yeah.
I was unfortunate.
Around nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand was right when I started being the town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Danny would have remembered because Danny probably would have been on the board then.
Well, would it take, just draw up some papers and give them the land?
Mm-hmm, you can do that. I mean, they have to be willing to accept it, of course.
Which they're already maintaining that, so there's really no reason for us to keep it if we've already gotten a right of way to the water tower.
They don't pay real estate taxes, so it's not going to increase the tax pay. And they are a nonprofit, so.
The town owns the railroad right of way. The town owns the railroad right of way through there, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the other side.
Yeah, right, but that's still, we got plenty of access to the water.
Water tower if we need to.
Sure, just put the gate on the other side. How does board feel about that?
I think it sounds good to me.
Well, as I say, as long as let's keep all this stuff, uh, the town's not, probably not capable of selling it to anybody that would want it.
Well, I'm not actually talking about giving them the land.
That's what I'm saying.
And whatever's on the land is theirs at this point, so.
Right, but I'd say the town's.
I thought you were talking about donating the land, you're not talking about, you are talking about donating the land.
He's just saying, you're not gonna find anybody else that's gonna want that little L shape.
The town can't, the, the town has no future in keeping it, they can't sell it to anybody, uh, you know, reasonably. Or more than likely they can't, maybe somebody would be interested, but I doubt it, but it's not that much.
Probably only even a half acre, is it?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, there's enough to, you know, to build a house on in there, I don't know whether you'd want to or not, it's, you know.
Well, if they tried, they tried building that area anyway, and it didn't go well at all, so.
Where does that, where does that property end back there? At the start of the, the fence for the tower?
Yeah.
Is that where it ends, or does it go past that to the end of the fence for the tower to the south fence? Does it stop at the north fence or the south fence?
North, cause we own the, we own the fence, we own that property right there, so yeah.
Okay, I was just, I was just trying to clarify to make sure that, cause that actually sets inside that property there, so if that, if that L goes all the way back, then it's.
Well, it comes up and then L's along Maple Street.
But what I'm saying is, where does the L start, does it start at the railroad bed, or does it start at the fence?
No, at the fence.
Okay, I just, I just, I just, I just wanna make sure that we, you know.
You two that are on the board, you think they would be receptive to receiving this?
I think they would.
I think they would, because if there is potential to get any kind of grants in the future, um, they would have to come back and ask the town permission if they decide to do anything in that area. Um, I don't know that they would put apartments up, but any grants they do would, for any improvements, would, they'd have to come back to the town.
I think a motion to give it to them, if they get it.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to give the little piece of land at the Dublin Village Apartments to them. And we can find out what the exact details look like on paper when Bob whips up the map for us. If that's necessary, but we will see that, so, and Bob will prepare something, so, for the donation.
And before I prepare, just check, make sure that nobody's gonna have any objection, I don't wanna do all this and think, oh, we don't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
Yeah, for them, see if they'll actually take it.
Right.
And, uh, otherwise, then it's just wasted money and wasted time to get it off the.
I think we should just, I think we should ask them before we even put anything together and make a motion.
Well, that way it's already moving, so.
No, you know, once you made, made the statements, you know what you're giving away.
Right. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye, I abstain.
There's a abstain from Rex. It's a yes from Nathan, a yes from Gene, and a yes from Reeve.
Again, contingent upon their acceptance.
Yeah, if they're, if they want it. If not, it'll just stay as is. And we'll park, we'll need a new trash truck there.
How much of the sale were we talking about?
Okay.
Just the apartments here.
Yeah, you're, yeah, I did, yeah.
I just look at how it's broken here, have we given away this much ground?
Yeah, sure, they, cause it shows the whole property there.
Yeah.
I think we're talking about this right here, I believe.
Yeah, right, right here.
Right here as well.
Where's the water tower?
Is there a split of what the town, I mean, is it gonna be part of a split?
No, it, it can show the towers.
No, the towers are on down here, this is the railroad bed right here.
Right, but it's on the north side of the tracks.
I thought it was right, I think it's right in the bed.
No, it's on the north side.
Okay.
So it is gonna be a split of property on that, too?
I think so, yeah. For the water. Cause I think the tower's about right there.
Yeah, it's on that corner right there.
That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll take that line right there.
I feel like there's a reason they did that.
And you'll have access to that from.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already got a right of way from this drive through here. But this is their garage, and this is their driveway right through here.
So you're talking, does it go on out to the road, the ones you're giving it?
The driveway, well.
The ones you're giving it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the L shape right there, so.
Okay.
So the town, the town will still maintain this square down here?
Yeah, fenced in area, yeah.
And this going back, we go on.
Yeah, so we can just take a line right across there, Bob, would be ideal.
Okay, and you're willing to pay the cost of the surveyor to do that split then?
No, they should pay for it, if you're giving it to them.
I don't, I, I don't think it would be a problem, but I'm not gonna speak.
Would like to be done right away, but then, you know, get the information we need and do it to it, but.
Does, does they have an attorney as well?
Me.
He will bill us both, he will bill, he will bill Western Wayne Affordable Housing.
I think at least the last, I haven't done anything for you, but they probably still treat me, don't you think?
Yeah, you're still.
They probably get a better rate than we do.
Uh, no one gets a better rate.
No.
My sympathies sit down.
I can, I can, I can.
Attest.
Yes, I can attest to that.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, I'll look in here, cause we, it's in this mess.
Better go to your.
What's all this here? Railroad bed lays right there.
Uh huh, yeah.
What's this, broke out in lots?
Well, years ago, that's what they done for railroad.
And right there.
Before the road.
Yeah, before railroad, these were all lots, back in the Dillon and Wilson Chapel Road addition.
This was done by Buckley and Associates.
Railroad went to there and split it up.
And actually comes back around here, I didn't know that.
Yeah, this map was built, uh.
So, do we have all this? I don't know that.
Well, that's what I did, these are, this wasn't there when this was all laid out.
No.
And then the map been worked over two or three times, right?
Yeah, it has, yeah.
This is all.
This is built once.
This is, yeah. The railroad's been there a long time, but all the rest of the diamonds. Since eight years.
Yeah.
This diamond's not down in the railroad bed.
Yeah, it's pretty close, they live all that off.
But this was, this is the main piece for.
There's only like six feet between there and the house.
Really?
Or a bank or a subhead edge.
No, I just, I was, I was trying to figure out what this was.
Then the.
This is railroad, didn't you, I didn't hear somewhere, right along that street.
It's a measurement, I need to go back, pull this out.
Sixteen, about a hundred and ten.
What all we got in here.
But we own all this?
Yes, well, yeah.
We'll go through all this and, and. And I will, um, check with the Western Wayne.
Wednesday or next week?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
But basically, the intent is to give away anything except the water tower site.
Right.
But we need to make sure that we maintain a right of way to that. Yes.
Not ownership, it's a, just a right of way to it.
That's, yes.
Yeah, and I thought.
Probably a short bit there.
I, it should be in, yeah, it should be in the paperwork somewhere.
Might double check that.
Yes.
I can sit there and I can explain all this to this board and. Slap.
Yeah, just a few tickets then.
Okay, everybody's clear on that? That is the, what our donor sign would look like for the grant.
I like sample two.
Okay.
Can I see the colored one?
You don't have a colored one?
No, no.
No.
Lenny brought me this.
My bad, sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
Budget cutbacks.
Yep.
Will this be a plaque put somewhere, is that what we're saying?
It is gonna be a four by eight.
I like sample two.
Four foot, eight foot?
Yeah, it's gonna be big.
That's a monster, a little bit.
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be a four by four.
Our signs are four by four, these are our donor. See, I thought we were gonna have something nice little plaque like we have now, that's like a two by three. And, but Wayne County is paying for this sign, for all of the communities. And so it's gonna be a big. I'm like you, I like two.
Could be a bronze sign?
I'm sorry?
Could be a bronze, bronze sign?
I wouldn't think so.
No. No, it's gonna be, um, J. Bond board, like what we have, what we were looking at for ours. It's just gonna be big.
Sounds like.
Go with Persian too, they're like.
Yeah, they got theirs in, and is theirs four by eight?
No.
What is theirs?
Probably two by four or something like that, I have to.
Oh, that would, that makes more sense.
Yeah, it ain't that big.
Because she told me four by eight, she must have just been.
Where did, where did Persian put, there's a.
Over by the school. By the, the, uh, new playground company.
Well, now, are they installing this, or are we installing this, I didn't quite get that.
We are installing it.
So we can put it exactly where we want it?
Yes. Yes.
We can work that out and later paint, uh, backwards.
They are, they are paying for the sign, they pay for the, um, retail, um, design.
And how about the post, are they paying for the post, or are we paying for the post?
I, I think that's part of us.
I wonder, can we put it on the building?
Hold on, I gotta change my hat.
You got a good try with that, you think, or is that too far away?
No, I don't know why, because, um, I told them if we did it, it would be at the, I was thinking at the other end away, because there's so much there with the playground and the basketball, and we already have one sign there unless we put it down by the, the little one, so.
I think on the building would be my suggestion.
That would be fine.
That way you won't be hanging on it or driving into it, or.
It'll probably last longer.
Yeah. Yeah, they didn't specify that where we had to put it. So.
Yeah, they want a new signing on it, in the meantime. Softball board. Let's see, you can always put that in your head.
Yeah.
All right, next up on the agenda is a special meeting on September the nineteenth at six P M here in this building.
This is to go over the recommendations, um, for the rebid of the Oakborough waterfront.
That should be a very short meeting.
Yes. Yes.
We really need everybody to meet here.
Thomas.
I'll be here.
Do you actually open a bid?
Oh. Meeting is the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Oh, not the twenty-fourth, oh, I wrote that down.
Are we late on Thomas or something?
On Thursday?
Yeah, it's the Thursday, that's why I wrote that down.
They're opening the bids on Wednesday, we wanted to give them a day to look at it.
And then we were doing as soon as possible.
As well as time crunches usual.
Cause it, it was rebid, so it, we already lost.
I don't know, did he have anything that he used?
I haven't talked to Thomas, I think he was just coming to give us an update.
Okay.
We're not waiting another hour on him, that's what we're trying to do.
We can, we can do it on the nineteenth. Thomas is from Commonwealth, um, while he's doing that, I also have a miscellaneous appropriations transfer. They, it, between appropriations.
We gotta move money between counts?
Oh, good.
A motion to accept the miscellaneous in your appropriation list.
Transfer R six, resolution R six dash twenty twenty-four.
There's a motion on the floor for Reeve to accept resolution R six twenty twenty-four, or is there a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Do we basis move money from one count to another?
That's a six by zero.
Is there any other business to be brought up this evening from anyone from the board that didn't make the agenda? Just so we can start publicizing, would everybody be in agreeance on Halloween night to have a trick or treat on the thirty-first from six to eight as usual?
Yes.
That way we're not kind of the last minute when we needed our total meeting and everybody's like, well, it's yours, so. It's normally the same time Cambridge does theirs, so we're not competing with the crowds, so.
He does think that's business.
We're gonna do it on Halloween.
Okay, we need to approve the claims. Everyone had a chance to breeze through them. I was gonna ask you something, Eric, the other day, on Eric Mize, is that a refund for a meter, is that what that was, a meter deposit? Figure it was. Some questions I had. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the claims.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve claim, there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, last up for the evening is the financial report. This is how much money is sitting in your accounts.
I make a motion to accept the financial portion.
There's some pushing on the floor in the. Is there a second? All right, there's a second for the financials, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any final thoughts before we leave?
I got no response. I asked him if he was okay, and I got no response.
Just let him know that, or then he can, he can update us on the nineteenth. Or he can just give me an update and I can, uh.
Forward it?
Need most of the jar, I'm over there. Most of the jar.
See y'all on the nineteenth, six o'clock.